Okay, this is the meeting of Oakham Town Council. It's Wednesday the 11th of February. It is seven o'clock and we'll make a start with the agenda. First of all, we have apologies for this evening's meeting. I've received apologies from Vince Howard, who has been called out on a shout, as they call it. Do you want to take them individually? Do they go together, shall we? And John, who may be... Okay, so really it's only Vince who has had such as apologies. Time's all, second half. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay. Two declarations of interest. Members are asked to declare if required. Any disputable pecuniary interests they may have in respect to items on the agenda, any other interests that they may have in respect to items on the agenda. Do I have any declarations of interest this evening? No? Thank you very much. So, item number three, minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to read through the minutes at the last council meeting? Have any thoughts, comments or identified any others?
I suppose so.
All those in favour? Okay, so that brings us to countless questions. We do have one. Do you want to... From Mr Walters. You wish to... That's your question then.
Thank you Chairman, for clarification, this is a generic question, not a specific one. If an applicant for co-option to a vacancy on Oakham Town Council mentioned in his or her letter of application that they have discussed the matter with a serving councillor on Oakham Town Council, then should that application be deemed invalid according to our standing orders on co-option? Or if the application is allowed to proceed, then should the councillor mentioned in the letter be advised to declare interest and withdraw from the meeting during the voting on that matter?
Okay, I've looked at this and I've looked at our standing orders and I think your question is answered within standing order 35G. So unless there's any issue raised in regard to that subject, then there is no reason for any declaration or a withdrawal.
Just what was 35G state?
Actually no, that was written on here. Now I looked at it earlier, it had it written 'withdrawal'. I'll read it to you.
Bottom of there, is it?
Hmm?
Bottom.
Okay. Sometimes I need it to be a... I have a PhD to understand some of the terminology, but I'm sure you'll be fine with that, okay? So, in accordance with standing order 21, all applicants who are invited for interview will be informed that they are not to seek to influence any member of the council with regard to the vacancy. Should this occur, then the councillor or councillors who have been approached are to notify the chairman immediately. The chairman shall then instruct the clerk to inform the candidate that they will not be considered for vacancy.
Okay, thank you, that's clear.
So you can ask about being a councillor, but not influence the process?
Can I just ask a question? I just wondered why councillor Walters felt the need to ask that as a public question when he could have contacted the chairman directly and got the answer?
Openness and transparency.
I'm talking to you, I've talked to councillor Brooks. It was the methodology I chose, Chairman. I find that very difficult to understand. I just wonder what he tried to impress?
You are of course entitled to ask the question. Do you see the answer? So, item five, chairman and members' reports. Okay, we'll move on to this. Can I just ask if anybody has any reports they are going to be giving back on tonight? I don't have that list.
No.
No? No, okay. I mean, for me, again, it's been a really quiet month where they seem to be lacking in invites at the moment. So perhaps nobody wants me to go to their events, but that's fine because I've been really busy outside of the council anyway. Although it is hotting up and I've got quite a few events to go to in the next couple of months, so I'll keep you informed of that. Outside of civic events, relatively busy. We had a couple of meetings at Oakham County Council. And I suppose the biggest thing, although it was a very quick meeting with the solicitor, was that I signed the lease this week for finally completing the lease on the land outside on Bolithorpe Road. So that now is officially under our control. We're just waiting for the documents to all be signed. We just need them to come back from the solicitors and then we just need to ensure that obviously that area is maintained as agreed. So it's quite nice that we continue and we'll keep that little bit of green space on the way into Oakham Town. Keeps that going quite nice, I think. So that's good news because that's taken some time to get to fruition, so it's now finished. Thank you. On your table, and I hope members of the public have got copies of the clerk's report. Do you have copies of that?
Yes.
Okay. I can read these out if you would like me to. In the absence of the clerk, he did prepare this for me to read. So I'll just go through it. So obviously, as I've just said, the lease of Bolithorpe Road has now been signed. That's one element. Willow Crescent Play Area, the work has now been completed on this and been signed off. Richard and I went down and inspected the equipment that is there, that it's all in place. So Rennell will be informed soon. As the invoice from Compan has been received here in the office and £15,000 grant funding will then be released for the project. The skate park in Cuts Close, the final bid documentation has gone to Oakham County Council. The timescales produced by RCC state that the final decision on successful projects will be made in early March 2015. Obviously we'll feed back as soon as we have some information involved in that. Insurance and valuations. As members are aware, revaluation of council-owned assets are commissioned following the recommendations of the internal auditor. These have been carried out and show significant increases in the previously insured values. The council's insurers have been informed and the increases have been added to the council's premium both in March 2015 and the policy renewal date of April 2015, when the amount will be £5,386.90. I remember what it was last year, actually, I'm not sure what that increase is, but there is an increase obviously to represent the increase. Was it? Right, okay. Election workshop, the clerk will be attending an election workshop run by Leicestershire and Rutland Association of Councils on February 19th. Obviously we have elections coming up in May, so it seemed a perfect opportunity to go and be on stage on that process. In 2015, elections, prospective candidates. Rutland County Council are holding an open event on the 24th of February at campus to provide information to those wishing to stand for county or parish councils in May. And there is a post which is attached to the back of the clerk's report, but that will be advertised across the county anyway. Meetings for March 2015. Members are advised that there are two meetings at the council in March. So there will be two, four councils in March rather than just the one. And this will be to ensure that statutory obligations to the council are completed before the end of the financial year. So it's just our opportunity to tie your court. Any loose ends, anything else we wish to finish off before the elections take place? Warstop. How much is... Treasury has announced that this will be redeemed in its entirety on the 9th of March 2015. As members are aware, the council's holdings amount to £967.83. Not quite sure what happens to that, do you? Yes. Internal audit, this took place on the 4th of February. No issues were identified and members will consider report at the meeting when it comes to our meeting on March 11th. But we are running events of our own to try and attract or provide people with information about calling a town councillor on the 14th of March. We're planning to run that event in here. There will be some displays and information available and packs for those that... With information about the town council. The packs to apply to be a councillor have to be obtained from Rutland County Council. So we're not providing those packs on that day, but we're just going to be here to provide people with information, the opportunity to talk about the potential of being a town councillor. So from our point of view, if there's people available to come along that day, it would be more than grateful received. I can be there most of the day. I know Adam's identified that you come in the afternoon, haven't you?
Yeah, after work.
All right. I'm there, huh?
Right, lovely, okay. So if I can just let Alison know merely what sort of... You probably already have it, if Alison keeps... I can perhaps keep a tag of it so we can cover the whole day and then we can hopefully attract some people into our spaces.
Chairman, can I just ask a question on this clerk report? Do we know how much this is costing? Election workshop, how much is that costing? Do we know?
No. I think it's really, I think it's on the NOK.
Oh, we pay travelling?
Yeah, yeah, we just pay travelling expenses. It's... I mean, I'll double check on that because I don't know for absolute sure. But it's part of... It's at the headquarters in... And stick.
I just wondered whether Alison should be invited to this one?
Finishing thought? No reason why not? Okay. Oh, Roger, shall we? Shall we? Okay, deputation by the public are invited. Any members of the public are invited to talk or do a deputation about any item that's on the agenda for maximum of three minutes per item. Mr Brooks, you have your hand up. Now, just ask if any of the members of the public wish to make a deputation this evening?
No.
Okay.
First item is item number nine, co-option to two new members of the Oakham North East Ward. You're considering that item this evening when you haven't complied with your statutory obligation to publish a notice of the vacancy. You don't publish a notice of resignation, but the law requires this council to publish a notice of vacancy. The electoral commission told me you don't have to co-opt, but you cannot consider co-option until you have followed your statutory requirements because it's up to the public whether they decide to call an election within six months of the election, not you. It's then your decision, if no members of the public call an election, to decide not to or to co-opt within that six months period. The report that the clerk has drawn up tells you that there's been advice that you were wrong not to publish. He doesn't use the strong word statutory. I did ask my councillor before the weekend if he would speak to the council and perhaps they would comply, then I wouldn't need to give a deputation by putting the statutory notices up from Monday, but that hasn't helped. So, you know, this is another occasion where Oakham Town Council feels that it can do as it pleases and it can't. And I'm afraid I'm not going to let this one go because you've breached quite a serious democratic statutory right of the public by not publishing it. Thank you. Anyway, and then it's item number 11, the practitioners' conference. I believe the last time the clerk attended was in 2010 when I was on the council and the reports came back that it was enlightening or... It'd been a jolly as far as I was concerned. And it was expensive and it wasn't approved, I believe, the next time round. So I just wonder why it's come before the council now. And as we all know, the clerk is obviously not fit to be working full-time, but he seems to be a full-time employee. He's not fit to be here this evening when he should be. So I don't see why the taxpayer should be asked to fund this type of activity. If you work as an accountant, you can go to guilds or associations, but your employer generally doesn't pay for those things. I had the same experience working for the church many years ago. If I went to a specific guild, I paid. I took time off. And you went on a weekend to these things, but no one paid my travel expenses or anything like that. So I don't see why the residents of Oakham should pay this when they're paying for somebody who's not even working properly for months. And I'll just leave it there because I don't want to make it a problem.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, so that brings us to the co-option in relation to our recent applications for Oakham North West. We have three applicants, Mr Brooks, Mr Sully and Mr Mills. That's correct, isn't it? Thanks, I beg your pardon.
Shall we restart again then?
Okay. Three applicants, or three people that attended the interview. Mr Brooks, Mr Banksby, Mr Mills. Obviously, those of you who weren't part of the interview process will have had opportunity to read the letters or the application of each of those individuals. The way we need to do this now is to vote for our preferred candidate. We all get one vote. There is no... No vote. No, no vote. So you all get a vote to vote for your preferred candidate, okay? If you wish to abstain, then you need to abstain from voting for all three candidates. You can't abstain from one and not abstain from either two. Okay. So I will...
Can I just make an observation? I'm sorry, not only getting your voice and getting the noise from upstairs as well, so it's a bit difficult. Just to say, as an interviewer on the panel, I learnt an awful lot from every single one. And it was well worth turning up. I don't know how many people did attend the interviews, but I learnt quite a bit from each one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so everybody has one vote?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll say the names and then you put your hand up if you vote for that person. We have to have an outright majority prepared for the one to be counted. So can I ask for any votes in favour of Mr Brooks, who was the first person to be interviewed on that evening? Okay. Mr Banksby?
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay. And Mr Mills?
I'll go first, Mr Mills.
Is that for you?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a clear and outstanding majority vote there for Mr Banksby if he's not here by the evening.
I do.
So we will have to contact him.
Is that gentleman asking a particular question?
You have your own statement.
Yeah, I was just... Just with a calculation, speaking of... Thinking of...
Chairman, can you just read out exactly who's got what?
But that man's stupid. And I'm recording this, I'm saying...
There was no vote for Mr Brooks. Five votes for Mr Banksby and one vote for Mr Mills.
Thank you.
So we will contact Mr Banksby and see if he accepts the offer of co-option. And if he accepts, we invite him to come and sign his declaration. We can do that tomorrow, probably. Okay, that brings us to item nine, which is co-option. Co-option of two new members to North East Ward. As the members of the public did point out, although we declared them two in Oakham County Council, they weren't publicly advertised. So unfortunately, we're not able to co-opt during this current round. So we have to make a decision as to what to do with regard to these two vacancies. Firstly, we need to decide if it wishes to co-opt two new members, if we want to pursue that process because obviously we're going to have to get an advert out fairly quickly within the network by tomorrow and the next couple of days. And then we have to obviously wait 10 days for those to respond. So there is a time factor there. We can't turn the clock back. We didn't advertise it at the time. We have to do it now if that's the process we wish to follow. Any comments?
Just quite from my understanding of the situation, Chairman. My understanding is that once we've published these vacancies, all we can decide is, in the event of there not being a call for an election, in that event, we can decide we wouldn't wish to co-opt.
We can. We can decide that, yeah. But we have to advertise and then if the public have the right to call an election.
Yeah, so the decision we're making is in the event of no one calling an election, whether or not we wish to co-opt.
Yes.
The point is if these vacancies became vacant during the six months prior to election, then there's no requirement for an election to be here to co-opt.
That's wrong. You've got to put the statutory notice. No, Mr Darius, I've got the email. I can show it on the phone from the electoral commission. You've got to follow the statutory requirements. So then I can go out or someone can go out and call an election.
Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Maybe you... I'll go first because I'm talking. I asked the same question, I think, that Rob had. And apparently, I think what Alpha said there is what I was told. Because we're within six months of a main election, the option for a public calling a by-election is not the case. The only point we have to consider is if we want to co-opt and the council may choose not to co-opt because it is also so close to a major election. Does that clarify?
It's not true. If you look in the paper, there was a parish council begging people not to call an election because of the cost.
Just to avoid any doubt whatsoever, we could make the decision that in the event that an election is not called, and that may be the case because there's no requirement for it, it doesn't matter what the reason is, but in the event that an election is not called, then we make the decision whether or not to co-opt. And that covers all possibilities. Love it.
Yeah. Oh, Mr Walters.
Come on. Thank you. I think Rob speaks wisely. I think in our minds and understanding, we do have to turn the clock back and say we shouldn't blame anyone in particular for the fact that it wasn't advertised at the right time because I don't remember anyone around these tables in this room saying at the time, quickly you must go out there and advertise the vacancies. I think we are all equally open to these fragilities that we let it go. I remain disappointed that having received the advice that it should be advertised, but it was not advertised, immediately upon receiving that advice.
Yes, and it should be advertised.
Regardless of that, we do not actually have to still advertise vacancies.
But we as members of the public have a right to call an election.
Mr Brooks, can you allow us to debate this as councillors should be allowed to debate?
No, because you shouldn't be debating co-option. You should be putting the statutory notice up. That's as simple as that. That is what the electoral commission said.
You have very clearly made your point. I accept your point.
But you don't want me or someone else going out there and calling an election. That is all. Because you know that's the only way I can get on to this council now. That is the issue. So you bend the rules.
Oh, sorry, Alan, I haven't finished.
You've sat down, so I've got to finish.
Well, that's because it's not bad to have two people talking at the same time. Correct, thank you. Yeah, so I think Rob's advice, Rob's suggestion is probably the way to go. The sooner the better. We can't turn the clock back. But two roles don't make a role.
So we have a person on the table to get these vacancies out in the public domain ASAP. I might explore it, I hope. And we'll wait.
Chairman, yes, I was actually going to... Because I'm right behind Rob as well on this. Because if we put in our notice boards and public announcement that there are two vacancies on the council, then if the 14-day timeline for a by-election is adhered to or is a requirement, which I don't believe it is, then it covers that base. The only question is then do we co-opt? And I propose that in the event that there is a by-election call, because I mean, it can't be, that we do not co-opt because it's too near to the main election.
There will be an election call, Adam, you're wrong. There will be an election call because of the fact that the electors go up. There will be an election in the vote boards.
So we have a proposal. Please, can we please have quiet in this chamber? We have a proposal on the table that we advertise. We wait for the statutory 14 days to see if... What interest we have in that position. And we do not co-opt. Because if 10 days passes, 14 days passes, we get interest. By the time we've interviewed and co-opted, we'd be mid to the end of April anyway. So the timeline doesn't really allow for that. And for all those that are interested in becoming a town councillor, there is a major opportunity coming up in two months' time, in which case the decision will be made at that point. So Adam's made that proposal. Unless you wanted that proposal on the table, did you?
It's secondary, I'm all right with that.
So the proposal, could you repeat it? So we're up to it here.
Yeah, the proposal is that the council abide by the public notification to...
Can we have silence in the chamber, please?
Of vacancies. Yes, we wait 14 days, but I still believe that there's not a requirement and that we do not go through a co-opting process because it is so near to the main election.
Thank you.
Okay, so basically we publicly notify and then we do not co-opt. Okay, so basically, we publicly notify and then we do not call.
So are all councillors clear on that proposal?
Too much of a problem. The only authority to be able to call an election is Rutland County Council. The principal authority in there will not call an election within six months of a major election.
No, it's the public that call the election, not Rutland County Council. It might be your opinion that they're a dictatorship in that way.
Can I have the motion, please, Chair?
Please, if you're going to...
No, it's wrong, he is saying the wrong thing. It is down to the public to call an election. It's not the council. It is ten signatures written on a letter, which I can take to the council as soon as you've put that notice in the notice book.
Okay, well, that's fine, you go ahead and do that. But I would like to ask you to, if you're going to be this disruptive, I'd love to ask you to leave the chamber, please.
I'm asking you to just to comply with the statutory requirement. It's not even called an advert, it's called a statutory notice.
Chair, I prepare, we'll ask this member of the public to leave the chamber.
Well, he's not going to, because you're going to move on to the next item after you've made a pass at this.
Do you have one chance to remain quiet now, please? Thank you. The proposal is on the table, it is seconded by...
And I did use the terminology, public notices. If you include the word statutory, public notice, then that is mine. And also the second part, that is not to co-opt. Because it's so close to the general background.
And we've had that seconded, can I have all those in favour of that proposal?
The county council decide.
I'm against it, because I don't think it's a correct proposal.
It is perfectly correct.
One against. Okay, do you want that recorded?
He just doesn't want anyone to go and call an election, that's all he does.
Okay, we have, it takes us on to item number ten, which is Hollands Fair, which is an annual event, which takes place on Crutt's Close. We have a letter asking us for permission to use Crutt's Close for the purpose of the amusements on the twenty eighth of April through to the fourth of May. Does anybody have any objections to that?
I just want to see if I can...
Okay.
We'll just need whatever the standard rate is for...
Can I have a proposal for that then, please? Yes, Joyce, seconded by Alf. All those in favour? Okay, which brings us to item eleven, which is a proposal for the clerk to attend the two thousand and fifteen Practitioners' Conference. This takes place in Stratford-on-Aidman and it's from March the fifth, or March the fifth and sixth. The term could cost the committee three hundred and five pounds, plus six hundred and five pounds travel. There is currently money within the budget to cover this. And we do, of course, have have a duty to our staff in terms of professional development. But obviously, it's open to debate the questions or comments around whether we should approve this or not. All right.
Yours.
Tell your words, I shall.
Well, I'll let you go first.
All right. I just feel at the moment, with all the time he's had of work, I think going to a Practitioners' Conference at this moment in time will add to his stress. And I don't feel obliged to spend public money at this moment in time on him attending two, I think it's a two-day event, which is an overnight stop. And I would prefer, if it was just a one-day event, I have no problem. But to go for two days and pay for a hotel, et cetera.
It's all inclusive.
Yes, I know, but I do think, at the moment, he's got enough on his plate without adding any more stress. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Chair, I'm going to make similar comments really, that the clerk is obviously on a programme where he's coming back to work on a gravity process and he's picking up the game again. And this seems to be something which would add to the pressures of his job. But the idea is to look after employees. There is also another thing, is that he doesn't always attend by, I don't think he attends his parish forums down at Arson's, to see where he can learn some of this stuff. So he's not going to attend local events, and it seems a bit pointless on spending money.
Okay.
Very formal.
I am very formal, you say.
I think they're a difficult one, and I think we have to be a little careful what we say in the public domain. I think it's our responsibility as an employer to continuously allow our staff training and progression. In terms of the ability, for whatever reason, to attend and to get benefit from it, I think that is for the staff member himself to determine. I don't think it's for us to second guess. Another person might well say, "This could be the making of me". So bearing in mind responsibilities, I'm actually in favour of sending him. I appreciate that probably isn't the ideal idea.
Chair, thank you. I have to say that I agree with both Joyce and Alan. Having spent some time talking to Richard, I personally feel that it wouldn't be appropriate to send him on this occasion. And quite honestly...
It wouldn't all good.
It would not.
Okay, so I'm...
And quite frankly, I would, I would suggest, if Alison would accept the invitation to...
This shouldn't be discussed in the public domain. It shouldn't be discussed here at all.
Okay, so can we, Tom?
I, I agree with both to an extent. I think it clearly is our responsibility to make sure that all the paid staff have all the opportunities that they need to be appropriately trained. However, when the clerk's on a return-to-work and part-time basis, I don't think it would be appropriate to go to this particular course at this particular time. But I would like it indicated that, at a time when he is able to return full-time, that we hope to seek an alternative.
Okay, do I have a proposal on the table? It seems that we're moving towards...
I would, I would propose that, I'd use the elken words of Rob. I propose that this time it's not appropriate, on the grounds that, because of the return-to-work policy. But in the future, it would be appropriate. So on this occasion, I wouldn't support it.
Okay, so there is that the training is going on, the election training next week. So it's not as if we're ruling out all opportunities for...
If that's the proposal, Chair, I would second that.
Okay, so that's a proposal. Did you get that now?
Yeah.
And stand a second a bit. So all those in favour of that proposal currently? Six. And one and against, and one against. Okay, so we're heading up. We do have a planning application this evening. Isn't it working?
Yeah. Yeah, the project is.
Okay. Consider the following application.
Is it on? The light's not coming up now.
Yeah, it's just needed to put the warming on. There you go. To consider the following application and to agree, any comments, observations or recommendations to be made to the county council. It's in relation to construction of two hundred and thirty-seven new residential dwellings, garages and associated infrastructure in area nine, which we'll work our way through in a second, which is the land between Harley Court and the parkway.
You have the blue section.
Is it? I don't know.
Oh, no, the red section. The grey, grey area.
The grey, yeah, okay. So that's behind BAR, is it?
Uh, yes, it would be, yes. Yes, it's a rugby field.
No, it's the agricultural programme.
Oh, well, you could play rugby.
Chair, I spoke to the case officer about this. And he explained that this is obviously phase nine, which comes after phase ten. And he said that the overall outline plan has already been agreed. And that this is purely and simply the details to go forward to the final decision, application, decision.
So it's very condensed, isn't it? It's very tightly packed. So that's basically the message, just of what is the language to bring up for everybody watching.
Yeah, there's like elevations of lots of the hours, it's always nice to go...
They're not dissimilar to the other properties that have come forward, are they? Are they building them that way?
Yeah, it's in the north park, can't be that.
It's very much like the rest of them.
Exactly, that's what I thought when I saw it.
That's very much like the rest of the station. Do you have anything about garages?
Yes, something come actually. Oh, there's another, there's another park block there.
Is there parking spaces for every dwelling?
Chair, the principle they've been told by the case officers, not just this case officer, but other planning officers, is that they, they work on one and a half cars per space. So...
A car, a smart car.
I would suggest they're smart cars.
Well, as they ask, are there any comments, observations or recommendations to the Rutland County Council in relation to this plan?
There's not much we can do. I think we don't, I think on a, a, a blocky plan of this scale, I think it's appropriate for the council to acknowledge this. I don't, I don't think we can sort of say, "Car blocks, yes or no"? I mean, we would say no, anyway, because it's in prison, we agree to these sort of things. But I think we acknowledge the fact that they're going into phase ten. And we appreciate the, this consultation element of it. But that's, that's all I think.
If I may, what?
What I regret most of all about the development is that we were promised faithfully it would appear as an organic growth. If it would not appear like this, as simple straight blocks of a corner in narrow buildings, we were promised it would be like a selection of villages, wouldn't we?
Yes.
So albeit that this is the detail on the weird matter, have we made a pause? Whether or not we can write that, I doubt it.
Do you want that meeting to be reported? No.
We're perfectly happy to have that. We were promised an organic growth appearance for the development.
I could say that although we acknowledge and appreciate the opportunity to comment, that...
The implementation of the organic growth is a bit blocky.
Yeah, disappointed in the general, the overall appearance of the...
Chair, I think one of the, one of the big disadvantages for us, when there is an application of this dimension, is that when the RCC Planning Council, when they have it put before them, it's done by a case officer who introduces everything, and he is able to be questioned. We don't have that facility. And I think it's, it's not, we can't give a truly informed opinion. And we need a case officer here to talk to us about this if we're going to come to any decision. And he's not going to do that.
Well, do you want to include that in the comment log? To say that we appreciate the opportunity to comment. However, because we don't have appropriate representation from an officer, that we're unable to make a fully informed response. Does everybody else?
Yeah, Alan's bored.
It's quite close to the bar, actually, isn't it?
That's just the exit.
Yeah, that's the bar, we can get the pants out while I'm riding the exit room, so.
Chair, can we zoom in and see where the exit is on to Hammond underway? This one's underway too narrow for us to have that.
It's sort of... Yeah, if you go slightly up there, move your mouse, that's it, just there. If you don't, over to your left, just there, that's it.
That's the great bit that comes out on the left side.
That's almost opposite Jackson, isn't it?
Which is it, not a bad enough place with...
Uh, chatting, you've been on guys, of course, but with all the...
Just parked up scarves there, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, they're, no, they're slightly further down, aren't they, Jackson? That one's mark on there from Saturday, yes.
I mean, we've raised, I mean, it's not in relation to this planning application, of course. But we have raised concerns about that road previously, when the supermarket was under discussion. And they, you know, they increased traffic from delivery lorries, et cetera, coming down that road.
And when the next phase is built, there'll be, another road will link in. Sorry, Joyce, you want to...
It's okay, but I should stand up, this is a council meeting. Can we put it as subject to highways' consent, Peter?
Okay, so have you got all those comments? So we welcome the opportunity to, we acknowledge and appreciate it, which needs to comment, however, without a great sensation, not to make a fully informed response. The council would like to, or the council wishes to comment, forget it, has concerns regarding access.
Good one, that development is done there. There's access there.
We would appreciate the referral to highways, the comment on this, yeah?
Yes, it's only when the next phase is done here, you then have access off the main road. And through there from the other head of the state. And potentially from there from... No, you don't want it. To there.
Okay, got everything. Did you want to put out the overall appearance, Alan, or...
That's up to people, yeah, I may be correct, if people support it.
Oh, that, I would, I would support Alan, put it there.
Certainly some of them.
But the overall appearance is not...
Doesn't reflect the organic appearance promised in the Russian master plan.
It looks a very high density, doesn't it?
That's what I said.
I know, it's only need that for local services, but it does have a very high density of houses.
Without supporting facilities with... Okay, is it a Friday hacker with that?
We need to... What I know, we said we were unable to comment, so I'll see if I can...
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us on to item thirteen, which is the schedule of payments. Now, they've approved the schedule of payments for the period of January to February two thousand and fifteen. thousand and fifteen. Does anyone have a chance to have a look through, identify any concerns or comments they wish to make?
I suppose I was going to make, I made one observation, because now the planning bits are on, so... The, on the utilities of electricity cuts close, electricity balance stands, well, the balance stand gets more, uses more than the shelter, isn't it? The price on the cuts close seems to be more than the balance stand. It seems to be quite a lot. I know we had the electricity put in the, in the shelter, but it just seems to be higher to me, than the, than the, how much use. I, I know it's saying it's more than that, you know, it's just observation, maybe it's something she'd keep an eye on. You know, we, I presume the lights being left on, everything left on that, but, you know, it's just little, watch the pennies, the pennies will crack to themselves, that's all.
The lost it's, what do they call it?
Yes, Stanley Chelsea.
Stanley Chelsea.
Yes, could be.
Yeah, moved it.
Right, okay, cool. But there was, I proposed to accept them.
Okay, so, all those in favour? Thank you very much, and finally, statement to the council, same question, you've got a good chance to have a read.
It's, it's an observation rather than anything else, that we pay for the hire of this establishment here, and yet we're paying forty-four pounds every two months for window cleaning, for two windows. We are paying a lot of money for nipping out and getting envelopes and paper. It's only an observation. If we had bigger premises with bigger storage, we could buy our paper and envelopes and anything else in bulk.
The, the window cleaning is, is for the toilets and...
Sorry?
The window cleaning's not just for here, it's for...
Well, it says window cleaning, forty-four.
But it's, it's other properties, it's not just the, the window, which you have just here.
So then it should be...
Then it should, sorry, then it should say so.
It's a minute.
Yeah. That's open after four o'clock, just.
Well, maybe it could say window cleaning across, yeah, okay, across open time, yeah. Just a bit clearer, but it's not just one, one window. Any other, Rob?
Yeah, just, just to correct some misinformation I gave you earlier, Chair. When, when you asked about the current insurance costs, I said it was five thousand. Five thousand was actually the budget, but I've just noticed the actual figure was four thousand seventy-fourteen pound ninety-four.
Ah, well. So it is actually, it is actually quite a considerable increase, isn't it?
About thirteen percent.
Although I know the, the increase of, of the properties, the valuations was considerably higher, so it sort of matches, yes, I...
Thank you, I notice on the last one page, it is...
Page number two?
I just want to make sure Joyce can find it. And the subtitle of the Ploughing Parks Committee shows a considerable amount, and I realise partly why that is, it's because we haven't paid for some things which are yet to be done, or we haven't revoiced or whatever. But within there is additional maintenance, and I do wonder if anyone has yet picked up the report on recommendations for maintenance to the playground in the parks. I see someone shaking their head, which I first saw in January, it was produced in November, so it is an inspection of our playground, works that are recommended to be carried out, but haven't been carried out, and yet we're carrying an under spend within that budget. So I suppose I'm asking a question related to this paper, who is going to pick up that document and spend this money and have the repairs done?
Do you think we're back out again tomorrow as well?
This cuts close?
No, it's the Jolly Parks. But yeah, the, the one over there.
Yeah, it was, it was actually highlighted today by a member of the public, that the, I think cuts close, the rocking, swinging seesaw, whatever thing is missing, and also one of the flower things, the daisies has to be missing.
We've already, that's in hand, and that's already, already had it for quite a while.
There you go, good.
If I may, what, what concerns me, it's not just that, that there are about five pages of recommendations, some of them are quite minor.
Okay, well, maybe we need to bring that up. Okay, well, maybe we need to bring that up, as another agenda, I know time moves on, but it's reasonable to expect it for our recommendations that we then carry them out. But I know there has recently been a renewal of all parks, hasn't there?
Yeah, and the inspections taking place again tomorrow as well.
Okay, so we'll see what the outcome of that is. Sorry, do you want to...
No, no, no.
And that, any other comments or questions around the finances?
Might be, just, just one act of that, on the mural project, mural.
Mural.
My interpreter will, interpreter for me.
Page is now?
Well, it's on, it's on page two again, it's at the bottom.
All right, got it, got it.
I just wanted to make sure, we, we need to put in a final request for the final payment from the Arts for England, because now the project is complete, we should be, there was an outstanding amount that should have been claimed.
I think, um, I think I was going to do that.
Yeah, all right, do you mind?
We'll chase that off.
Can we chase that off, please? Because it is, it is outstanding on here, if we don't tie it up by the end of this financial year, we will potentially lose it.
And these are the things that you said you...
Just tie up those loose ends.
But also, it comes out of the town council coffers, when it shouldn't be done, because it was, it was a budget.
Yeah, chase it, the inspections going on.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I think we do, we do, for the second, I would propose...
Lovely, very, that's for it.
Oh, sorry, can we have a proposal for the last item?
Oh, second.
All those in favour? Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you very much for attending. Please, thank you very much, this is to an end, it is now seven fifty...